All right.
We'll now call the city council regularly meeting to order, please rise to invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Father, we thank you for this day, Lord. Lord, we just invite your Holy Spirit this meeting, Father. We ask that you would give us wisdom, Lord, to make the correct decisions tonight, Father. But we ask that you bless each and every person here, Father. We ask you bless the city, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
They be seated. Madam clerk, will please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember McGuire here. Councilmember McCure here. Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
We have a call.
We have Ms. Janice Rieric here with us tonight. She is the interim executive director, the Boys and Girls Club of Highlands County. She's going to tell us all about it.
Good evening.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Rieric, is your, is your microphone on? Oh, sorry, Kristen. No.
Is blue light on?
It'll be blue.
Blue.
Technical difficulties.
Ah, very good. I get to start over.
Oh, that's much better. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm just going.
Mayor Anderson, Deputy Mayor Bernard, and councilwomen Taylor, McCure, and McGuire. My name is Janice Rieric. I'm the interim executive director and CEO of the Boys and Girls Club of Highlands County. I've been part of the organization for four years, serving in the role as Director of Operations in Grants Management. Today, I thank you for this opportunity to inform and update the council on the state of the club here in Avon Park. I shall give you a brief background of the Boys and Girls Club in general and in Highlands County in detail. I shall present a few highlights of what we do and what we are, and I'll share a few data points to illustrate the value of the club for Avon Park's youth and of the city's generous support of our program. Since 1997, the Boys and Girls Club of Highlands County has strived to fulfill our organization's mission to enable all young people, especially those who need us most, to reach their full potential as productive, caring, responsible citizens. The Boys and Girls Club of America began in 1860 in Hartford, Connecticut, as a safe place for boys to be off the streets and where they are given opportunities for study and character building. By 1931, the movement had grown so that several boys' clubs decided to affiliate as a federation of boys' clubs, and it celebrated its 50th anniversary in 1956. In September of 1990, seemed like it took a long time, the name was updated to the Boys and Girls Clubs of America when the girls' memberships were officially recognized. Today, the national organization has over 5,000 clubs across the United States and in military bases around the world. Here in Highlands County, the Boys and Girls Club was established in July of 1997. By the early 2000s, the club began a welcome and wonderful relationship with the city of Avon Park. Our first operations were conducted out of a trio of mobile trailers that were moored in the field adjacent to the soccer field and track at the Martin Luther King Recreation Complex. In November of 2016, the city of Avon Park created an agreement with the club for us to be able to occupy the Martin Luther King Complex building and the surrounding sports fields. It is under this agreement that our club presides over and is honored to serve as the steward of this city property. We provide a safe place for local youth to learn, play, and to grow. We want them to grow into their full potential while developing ongoing relationships with adult professionals whose focus is on presenting a series of programs that are age-appropriate, life-enhancing, and character-building. We employ a nationally accredited youth development strategy that promotes psychological, social, and physical well-being to help children excel in school, explore leadership experiences, and live healthy lifestyles, and most of all, plan for success after high school graduation. Our doors are open in the after-school time during the school year from last bell at 2:00 in the afternoon to parent pickup at 6:00 p.m. In the summer, the club operates from 7:30 in the morning till 6:30 in the evening. We are open for any time that the children of Avon Park are not in school, whether it be during the school year or during the summer. Our primary goal at the Boys and Girls Club of Highlands County is to improve student academics, provide personal enrichment opportunities, and also engage adult family members and promote their involvement. The program allows elementary, middle, and high school students an opportunity to participate in a subsidized comprehensive after-school program. We offer academic services for students in reading, math, science, language arts, and writing. Students also learn from personal enrichment activities about health and nutrition, cultural arts, and critical problem solving. We try to have a trio of activities every single day. When the kids attend Boys and Girls Club, they're going to come in for academics, enrichment, and fitness. For the little ones, we just call that getting their wiggles out, of course. Our program and services enhance the development of all youth by instilling in them a sense of competence. We want them to have that feeling that every person has something that they can do well. A sense of belonging. We want to provide a setting where young people feel that they fit, where that they are accepted. And we want to instill in them a sense of usefulness, the opportunity to do something of value to others. We think that it's a very important part of our program to instill in them that sense of service, certainly that you have as representatives of our community here, but as are many of the agencies in our county. We want them to be able to understand that service-to-others concept. Our primary target in Avon Park are the students attending Avon Elementary, Memorial Elementary, and Park Elementary Schools, as well as, of course, Avon Park Middle School and High School. In the 2021 to 22 school year cycle, the Boys and Girls Club served 88 students in the K through 5 elementary class. One year later, this past year, in the 22 to 23 school year cycle, that increased to 128 registered club members. Average daily attendance across the school year runs at about 68 elementary students per day. Our teen program consists of 6th through 12th graders, and that membership is about 15 to 18 kids every single day. Reaching beyond our public schools, it's important for you all to understand also that club members also participate from some, several of our local private schools. We are available for, like I said in the mission, all young people, especially those who need us most. Following our charge to serve youth without regard to background or ethnicity or economic circumstances, the Avon Park branch serves an almost equal share of boys and girls. Our club is 81% African-American, 11% Hispanic, and 8% Caucasian. Last year, we also counted among our members five students identified with special needs. Our staff mirrors our student members in many ways. We are 86% people of color and 13% white. With a support agreement with the School Board of Highlands County Food and Nutrition Department, the after-school program last year served 14,961 snacks. That's a lot of apples and juice boxes. In the summer, we served 2,652 breakfasts and 2,652 lunches to the Avon Park Club members. We are able to be able to provide that to kids so that, of course, no kid goes hungry and they have the nutrition sponsored by our Food and Nutrition Department at the schools to make sure that we're meeting their needs correctly. While post-pandemic school grades and other measures of learning across the country show a continuing need for improvement, it really is something that, as a nation, we're all working together to try to bring together and improve. The teachers and tutors of our Highlands County Boys and Girls Club set their own challenge in 2022 to help club kids raise their grades. We did this challenge and set it against a benchmark of the first marking period. Academics and their impact was measured by conducting sight word and basic math tests. We did that in October, and then we repeated it in April. All club members, especially those in the K through 2 grades, showed improvement. Our aim is to strengthen academic performance in the younger grades with hopes that will boost performance in the 3rd, 4th, and 5th grades. As we keep building it and we keep our testing, this is what we did on a local level, especially for the Avon Park kids, to make sure that we're staying on top of their school performance and doing what we could to be able to boost and help them. Not just kids are part of our club, their parents are, are club members too in a way, and we offer adult family member programming. Workshops and partnership opportunities are offered at regular intervals, at least six times per year, and these are specifically designed for parents and adult family members to attend. These are interesting programs presented by skilled providers in the fields of medicine, technology, finance, and community services. Using a format of brief 20 to 30-minute-long mini-classes, the intent of each presentation is to increase adult literacy and parenting skills while also providing a forum for adults to communicate with the club staff about how to be a part of, to contribute to, and be engaged with the club experience. The Boys and Girls Club of Highlands County, we call the Avon Park Athletic and Learning Center. We are very appreciative and very blessed to be able to have such a wonderful facility that has the big basketball court. We've got the soccer field on one side, a football field on the other, and athletics is really, and fitness is just a wonderful emphasis that we have here in our Avon Park Boys and Girls Club. Over the 20 years, this club has served more than 4,000 young people who call Avon Park their home. That's a big impact. Our site director has over 20 years' service to the club and to the city. Our teachers and tutors are also teachers and staff members in our schools, and they also serve in our local businesses and government agencies. Many of our parents now were club kids themselves. We're seeing a new generation come to the club. This past April, we partnered with United Way of Central Florida, whose Day of Caring volunteers painted our interior classrooms. Other donations from generous supporters have brought televisions for access to educational programs, and wise use of grant funds have brought high-quality curriculum so kids can learn in new and different ways. Our academics are designed to be able to support the day-school curriculum. If the schools are talking about volcanoes, well, we're going to do an experiment with baking soda and all that stuff to try to prove to the kids exactly what they learned in school. If they're talking about other things, we try to mirror that as well as we can so that anything that happens in the Boys and Girls Club in the after-school time is there to support the kids. So when they go to their day-school the next day, their, their studies are stronger, they've experienced something, and maybe learned it in a different way that makes it click. Notably recently, the club received a contribution from the Twin Lakes Development. This is a new development here in Avon Park, and their developers and owners have been extremely generous to us. We received that in June, and those funds will be designated for scholarships and also for our facility needs as they may come up. There are good things happening every afternoon at the Avon Park Club. Other things that have been happening lately are the Walk for Hope, which was a community event to stand up against drug and gang violence. The Walk for Hope was able to go through several streets in our area, concluding at the Boys and Girls Club location, where community leaders were able to get together and discuss new ways to be able to stand against gun violence. This coming August 5th, in just a couple weeks, I invite you all to come attend. We're having our back-to-school membership drive. It's going to be an event on that Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00. We'll be able to share with kids and get them ready with all the school supplies that they need. And also, of course, to be able to have a membership drive and increase the registrations for the coming school year. We are able to use help from different other agencies in the area. Tri-County Human Services is a wonderful supporter for us, providing health and nutrition classes for the kids. It's a very comprehensive setup, really, to train the whole child in very, very many ways. I look forward to a close relationship with the city. I believe that as partners, we certainly can bring great futures to our kids. But in conclusion, I don't even have the right words that can improve upon those of our site director in Avon Park. Mrs. Florian Anderson Wells always says it best. She says, "Thank you for the use of this beautiful building and for the quick response from the city for our every need. The city departments are always at the ready to come when we must call for help or services. The staff and personnel who respond are nice and respectful and have the best interest of the children at heart to make sure that they are always in a safe and comfortable place." That place is the Boys and Girls Club in Avon Park. It's located right here in our town in the Martin Luther King Recreation Center. And representing all the parents and the kids and the club, I can't thank this council enough for the wonderful generosity that you give to us to have a great, safe, positive place for our kids. Thank you very much.
Janice, thank you very much.
I have one question. I didn't quite hear, August 5th, did you give a time when that was on Saturday?
Saturday, August 5th, we'll be having that back-to-school event from 10:00 to 2:00.
10:00 to 2:00, thank you.
10:00 to 2:00. Do you have any questions for the director?
I do. I got a couple. Ms. Janice, I heard you said that you was tested in October and April. Is that every year or just, you know, last year? You test the kids every year?
We test the kids every year, but we had a special challenge this past year that I wanted to highlight. We were very concerned because of the post-pandemic marking period grades. What happened was the first marking period report cards came out, we were not pleased. The kids could do better. And the teachers of the Boys and Girls Club got together and they said, "What can we do in the after-school time to really boost and bump up our efforts?" And that's when they came up. They decided the best measures that they could do at that point were sight words, basic math. They designed a test for, that was age-appropriate, so it was different for the kindergarten and first graders, say, than it was for the 4th and 5th graders. But they had an age-appropriate, grade-appropriate test that was basically sight words and basic math. That way, they could control what they were teaching. And then, and they tested everyone in October, based upon what they saw happening in the first report cards. And then again in April, right before, we would be getting the last report cards. And in every single case, all the kids improved on the tests. So the, the teachers and the tutors and the Boys and Girls Club really got together. They worked on it from an enrichment standpoint, as well as an academic standpoint, and, and it really showed an improvement.
And my next question is, what was so special that the K through 2nd was improved the most? What was so special about the K through 2nd?
K through 2nd, for us, was the age cohort that needed the most, most help. Kindergarten, first graders, 2nd graders were coming into club at the beginning of last year, many of them suffering very severely. Their spelling was not up to par for grade level. Their reading was not up to par for grade level. At their very, very basic level, there were certain things that we would have an expectation that kindergarten, 1st, and 2nd graders would know, and many of the kids didn't know that. Not all of them, but many of them didn't, and it was very striking. And so that's why devoting those efforts, that age group is so ready to learn that by giving them just a little bit of extra help in the after-school time, they improved percentages better than the older kids. Because they had so far to go, yes, but they really were, were getting very, very close to catching up to grade-level behavior. And so that's why that was really the most striking results that we had. 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders were more, you know, they, they advanced probably along with the, with the school year, and they did well. But the K through 2nd's, yeah, that was very encouraging.
You certainly get more of what you subsidize. It sounds like you guys are pouring the resources in the right places.
We're trying to.
We thank you very much for all your efforts. Is there any other questions or comments, other director? Nope. Seeing none. Again, Janice, we thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Up next, we have the consent agenda. We'll be looking for a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve item C, consent agenda.
Okay. Do we have a second?
One second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passive.
Item number 6, this will be an event request, Ms. Doreen Pearlman. Will you please give your name and address or your organization for the record there on the microphone?
I've never done this before, so I'm kind of nervous. I'm Doreen Pearlman, and I'm a board member of the Who I Am Foundation. We're requesting that we could do a 5K in September, and the funds that are going to, is going to actually towards Heartland for Christian, uh, children. We found out there's 1,000 kids that go through, like, the intake center when these kids have been taken from homes or whatever for foster care. Those kids go to a home without even a pair of pajamas. So what our goal is to have this and everything go to purchase pajamas for the Heartland for Christian, um, childrens there, so you can go through the intake. Um, the Who I Am Foundation, we also do little memory books for them where they can take things if they, you know, that are theirs, they can belong, it can go with them. They're not allowed to take a lot of items with them. So these have little spiritual things, like my interact club from the high school, they make them, they write on there, you know, "God loves you," you know, "Keep your, keep the sun shining," and all the, and then kids, we help, they help the kids write their name and who they are in it, and they have a picture of, you know, if they have a picture of their parents, whatever they can put in there, and that book goes with them wherever they may go.
Okay.
So I'm just looking for an approval if we can have the 5K run.
What is the age bracket that you guys are helping for these kids?
We're.
Is this anything from newborn to high school, basically?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Any questions about the event?
Nope. Just thank you for coming back and explaining this.
Nobody knew what this, what organization was.
But I had a family emergency, so I.
I understand. Sure.
Thank you.
If there's no questions, we'll be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve D8 or D6.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passive.
Ms. Pearlman, we wish you well.
Thank you. I have the insurance information.
Yeah, please give that staff. Yes, ma'am, you too. All right. Item number 7, this will be a resolution number 2023-13.
Resolution of the City Council of Avon Park, Florida, providing for adopting a policy for the protection of individuals engaging in nonviolent civil rights demonstrations. Repealing all resolutions in conflict therewith and providing effective date.
Okay. Does anyone want to brief on this?
Melody's name there.
You know, basically what it is, is we're required to do this in order to get a grant, and they, they do, every once in a while, enter these, you know. So if we want the grant, we need to approve this, even though we don't have a, a police department, we can state we have a policy.
Very good.
And Mr. Jared, this is to get any grant or a particular grant?
A particular grant.
And what particular grant is that?
I'll bet I have to get to know it.
It's the Department of Economic Opportunity. Actually, it's now called the Florida Department of Commerce. They changed the name.
Again?
And we typically receive DEO grants on a almost yearly basis.
Yes, right now we have three. The fair housing, the fire department, uh, fire station hardening, and the drinking water.
Okay. And for all intents and purposes, this will not really have much of an effect on our day-to-day business of the city. It's more of a formality, given that we do not have our own police department. All right. Any other questions on this resolution? Seeing none, we'll be looking for a motion.
Making a motion to approve resolution number 2023-13, please.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Now for the fun. Item number 8, we have resolution 2023-14.
Resolution of the City Council of Avon Park, Florida, relating to provision and funding of fire rescue services and facilities within the city, providing for the imposition of fire rescue assessments throughout the entire area of the city, estimating the total amount to be funded through imposition of fire rescue assessments for fiscal year 2023 to 24, establishing the method of assessing fire rescue assessed costs against real property, especially benefited by provision of fire rescue services, facilities, directing the city manager to prepare preliminary fire rescue assessment role, establishing a public hearing to consider imposition of the proposed fire rescue assessments, directing the provision of notice in connection therewith and providing effective date. There, there's a typo on the left side of the, the body kind of, all right, thank you.
Okay. All right, chief, do you want to brief or do you want to hand it directly over to StanTech?
I'm just going to give you 30 seconds here. Our last study was done in 2015. Every year, we reassess fire assessment, and you guys go through all what numbers you want to charge. But this study gives us the ability to go up or down from that number. That number was set at a certain number in 2015. This study gives you the ability to go higher or, you know, start it higher and then go lower from there. But this is just a reassessment of all the components that go into that study to figure out the numbers we should be at, including updated budget and all that kind of information. And Peter over here in our hot seat is going to answer questions, and I'll jump in if, if you need me to.
Okay. Peter, do you have a presentation or are you just going to stand for questions?
Uh, no, yes, sir. I have a brief presentation for you guys. And good evening, everybody. My name is Peter Napoli. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes, sir. I work with StanTech, and I specialize in, uh, non-ad valourment assessments. So I work across the state with a number of different communities with this type of thing. And my, as chief described, I've been working for the city, actually, for about five years now, and each year, it's just been more of a, a regular procedural update of the assessment role. So property browser comes out with new data, there's new houses, changes to existing properties, splits, combinations, merges, et cetera. And we update the assessment role so everyone gets their assessments appropriately. But this is a more comprehensive update of the fire assessment program, and it's prudent for communities to do this. Uh, every, we recommend every three to five years. Uh, for you guys, it's been since 2015. So it's kind of, uh, been time to, to take a look at the rates, take a look at the methodology again, refresh all the numbers and make sure everything is legally tight and defensible, um, and, and also make sure that it fits, you know, the community's needs. So, um, with that, I'll start going through our little presentation here. Uh, a little background on, uh, the program and, and, and what it is. The fire assessment is a non-ad valourment assessment, meaning that it's not, uh, value-based like property taxes. And, but it, it appears on your property tax bill annually. So it's an annual, uh, annual amount that a homeowner will pay. And, uh, it's an alternative revenue mechanism, and it allows, uh, you to directly fund fire rescue costs, uh, with, with this mechanism. So it takes pressure off the general fund, takes pressure off of the property tax rate, and it uh, provides a dedicated funding source to your fire department in case of, um, you know, unforeseen fluctuations in the market. Uh, we all know that property values and property taxes are sensitive to fluctuations, and this is something that's dedicated and, and, and more stable than that, since it's not relying on that. And, uh, the, the current program in its state and the current rates that you have were established in 2015, um, through resolution. And, uh, we have a little table there showing your current rates. Right now, residents pay about $140 annually, single-family homes, uh, and that's a flat rate, um, per resident. And then commercial pays per square foot, uh, and it's about a point, it's about seven cents. Industrial warehouse pays about, uh, one cent per square foot. Government institutional, government and institutional properties pay about, uh, two, about three cents per square foot. So those are the rates that we're updating, and there's a whole methodology and process behind updating these rates that, uh, adheres to the Florida state statutes. So a little more background, uh, we were retained by the city because, uh, uh, you know, it was decided that it was time to update the assessment program and take a hard look at these rates and, and, and go through the procedures of refreshing the calculations. It's important to update these programs periodically because the allocation changes amongst the property classes. There's a methodology behind creating the rates, and your methodology is called the demand-based. So that is based on the actual calls that different types of properties put into the fire department. We take a look at that database and look at, you know, how often, how frequent certain types of property call the fire department and receive benefit and receive service from the fire department. Uh, and that changes over time as your city grows and changes. Uh, you know, the, the commercial base could grow, uh, faster than the residential base, or the residential base could grow faster than commercial. It really depends. So that's why it's important to update it to make sure it, it reflects the reality of your, your city's, uh, demographics. And that's a point two there. So, and then another point to make is that, uh, you know, cost of service changes over time too for the fire department. Their, their costs have risen quite dramatically, uh, over the past couple of years. Equipment, um, capital, vehicles, uh, and, uh, and a number of things have been subject to pretty heavy inflation, um, and that's, you know, been seen across the country. So cost of service does change, and this is another, uh, part of a component that we update in our, our, um, our study. And then it also gives the city an opportunity to modify the, the rate structure and the methodology based on your experience with the program. Uh, if you see certain things that work, some, certain things that don't work or fit for your city, whenever you perform a study like this, you have the opportunity to adjust and, uh, customize the program so that it fits the city's needs. So this, uh, this slide here summarizes the allocation update. So as I, um, explained earlier, the, the methodology is demand-based. Also, it's called Calls for Service, because every time you pick up the phone and call the fire department, it's recorded. Every incident is recorded in a database, um, and that forms the basis for, uh, creating. Um every incident is recorded in a database, um and that forms the basis for uh creating the allocation. So we look at all the calls and we separate all the calls that are fire uh fire in nature. So EMS is excluded, anything uh with advanced life support is excluded by state statute. Um the state statute uh sh- uh shows that EMS uh benefits people, not property, and fire benefits property. Uh that's what allows you to create this fire assessment program and and add it to the tax bill to property owners. So the table in the middle of this uh slide here shows the calls that we had identified and isolated being fire-related calls. We categorize them between the rate categories, residential, commercial, industrial warehouse, institutional, and vacant. And then the allocation is shown on the right-hand column there, sixty-eight percent of the calls went to residential. Seventeen percent of the calls went to commercial, three percent to industrial warehouse-type properties, seven percent institutional-type properties, and six percent of vacant-type properties. I would just point out that these are rounded showing there, so I think if you add them up, it goes to one oh one. That's because there's a couple of decimal points that are hidden there, so um these are those are just rounded numbers.
Can I ask you one question, sir?
Yes, sir.
Uh when you look at the uh fire calls, are you comparing them over the last year? Or you're comparing them back to two thousand fifteen, the last study?
So uh it's it's uh the typical procedure is to use three years of data, so we use twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two. Um and that's why we suggest that, you know, this this kind of study is performed every three to five years. You want to use the most current data. What happened in twenty fifteen might not really reflect how the city's uh department runs today. So we used uh wi- with help from the chief and and his staff, we were able to pull three years of data back to twenty twenty that show the that's uh included in the allocation here.
This is like the average for those.
Exactly, it's the average over those three years.
Got you. Thank you.
This next slide here shows the cost of service update, so we took a look at the estimated budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four for the fire department. We looked at the personnel service costs, um and that's shown on the left-hand side of this uh little ladder uh figure here. And that's one point nine million. We added operations and maintenance costs in for supplies, repair and maintenance, um fuel, et cetera. That was two hundred and sixty-two thousand. Uh we removed what we call offsetting revenues, and it's very minor. Uh but the the fire department does collect a few other miscellaneous revenues um like fire inspection fees. Uh so we made sure that those were removed from the cost basis, so there wasn't any double counting there. And then we included in assessment costs, so uh to have an assessment program, there's certain costs that are borne from that program. You, there's a a payment to the property appraiser for administering the program. Uh there's early payment discount, which is four percent. If you pay your taxes on time, you get a four percent discount, so technically the city will never collect a hundred percent if everyone pays their taxes on time. That has to be a gross-up added to the fire assessment program. And the uh the the last uh square there shows the total revenue requirement, and this is really the maximum amount of money that your fire assessment program could collect, and it's a two-point-three million. It's not what you currently collect, it's you're you have the ability to collect anywhere under that amount. So you could never collect three million dollars, you could, you have to stop at two-point-three, but you have the ability to collect seven hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand. Um really what it is, is it's a funding decision from the city's perspective, because the more you fund with the fire assessment program, the less you fund with property taxes. This next slide here summarizes some of the uh modifications to the fee structure that we made as part of this study. So the first one here, and and this is all for your consideration today. Um the first one here was adding a vacant property category. So in many assessment programs across the state, there's a category for vacant properties. Uh and most fire departments will tell you that vacant properties do have uh a demand for fire service. There's brush fires. They have to respond to certain incidents and events that occur on vacant properties, even if it is for the protection of nearby structures. If that fire gets out of control, that vacant property still derives uh a demand. Uh vacant property also benefits from the availability of fire service uh just because they're able to develop that property and get insurance. If if um if they, you know, have plans for development, the existence of the fire department allows them to get insurance for their future development. So there is a benefit there as well. So we we added the vacant property category in, and you'll remember that it was included in this table here when we looked at the fire allocation. And when looking at the calls, we saw over the past three years, six percent of the calls went to vacant property, so that's uh not an insignificant amount, it's actually more than the industrial warehouse category. The second was to remove the cap on residential dwelling units. Uh so when this uh the program was implemented in twenty fifteen, there was a uh a fee component that said, and 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 it's in the resolution, but basically the residential properties are capped at eighty units. And what that means is, you know, if there was a multi-story apartment building with two hundred units, it would only pay for eighty units. Uh where that applies in the city is the mo- there's mobile home parks that are above eighty units. And they don't pay for anything above that eighty unit threshold. Uh in my experience, um and I've been doing this for about eight years, I haven't seen that anywhere else, um it's it's kind of unusual. Uh because when you think about it, a mobile home park is in a sense a neighborhood, and a neighborhood would pay for every single-family home that exists in that neighborhood, so um they certainly do uh the 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 benefit that they receive from the existence of fire service does scale according to units, and it doesn't really get cut off at eighty, so our suggestion for you to consider is to remove that cap of eighty residential units. And essentially, for every property, you look at either the number of dwelling units on that property. If it's a duplex, it pays for two. It's a single-family home, it pays one. If it's a mobile home park with six hundred units, it pays six hundred times that rate. And um it's it's up to the owner of the property to disperse that, um because it is a single-owner type situation where one owner owns a mobile home park with six hundred mobile homes within it, they can then um allocate that to each unit, and then they would be paying the same as a single-family home. The third adjustment here that we're making and um this one is uh uh less flashy, but it's just essentially simplifying the non-residential uh fee. Currently, there's a kind of a tier system where, you know, if you're in a certain bracket of square feet, uh a thousand to three thousand, you pay X amount of dollars. This is simplifying it um to basically say that you're gonna assess per square foot, and it's gonna be rounded down to the nearest five hundred square feet. It'll be much easier for uh residents and property owners, taxpayers to uh calculate their bill and ensure that they're paying the right amount. They just go to the property appraiser site, look at how much square footage their building is, and then times that by the rate that you propose, and um it's as easy as that. So this slide here uh summarizes the current revenue. Uh sit currently in fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, which we're in, the city generates about seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the fire assessment program. Uh five hundred and eighty-two come from residential properties, a hundred and twenty-one comes from commercial. About five thousand dollars comes from industrial warehouse, about twenty thousand comes from government institutional, and uh currently you don't charge vacant, so vacant doesn't generate any uh revenue for the city. That's approximately thirty-four percent of your fire rescue costs, so you're at a thirty-four percent cost recovery model. And the general fund slash property tax pays for the remainder of your fire rescue costs. Uh this slide here summarizes the proposed revenue, um and we're looking at a situation where you would increase your cost recovery to about forty-two percent, so still less than half of the identified fire costs. And that generates approximately nine hundred and seventy thousand. Uh and then you can see the way it's allocated amongst the five different classes there. It's as simple as taking nine hundred and seventy thousand times whatever percentage call allocation there is, so sixty-eight percent for residential. So residential properties will have to generate six hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars of the total revenue requirement. And then you do the same for all of the other property classes. This slide here summarizes the calculation of the the proposed rates. So um starting from the left-hand side, you'll see the five property classes, residential, commercial, industrial, uh institutional, vacant. You'll see the calls for service allocation in the next column. You'll see the allocated amount um of the nine hundred and seventy thousand. Then you'll see the units that are uh billable within the city, so there's four hundred and si- four s- four thousand six hundred and ninety-eight dwelling units in the city that would pay a hundred, hundred and forty dollars. And then there's the square footage for the non-residential, and then there's the amount of parcels that are vacant. So uh you essentially take that column with the allocated amount, divide it by the allocated units, and then you get the calculated rates. Uh we had targeted uh maintaining the current dwelling unit rate, the current residential rate of a hundred and forty dollars. So we looked at a couple of different scenarios and we landed on this one. So this scenario here actually maintains a hundred and forty dollars per single-family home, which is um single-family homes and 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 residential properties, that's the majority of the city. And the rest of the rates uh are um spelled out there. You got eight cents per square foot, and we'll look at some example properties, so you can actually see uh how how it affects the bill, but uh and five cents per square foot for warehouse, seven cents per square foot for institutional, and then fifty-eight dollars per parcel. That's a per parcel charge for vacant. So these next slides here, and I'm sorry, I didn't realize it would look so small on the screen there, but it might be kind of hard to read. Uh starting from the top, we have the average single-family home currently pays a hundred and forty dollars. The proposed rates, they would pay a hundred and forty dollars, and that would be zero dollar change, so they wouldn't see any change to their tax bill. For the average commercial property, and I looked at, you know, your 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 property data, the average commercial property, six thousand square feet in the city. So this is a for a six thousand square feet building, they currently pay uh four hundred and forty dollars, and they would be paying five hundred and four dollars under the proposed rates, so that would be an annual change of sixty dollars, and that would be about five dollars a month. The average industrial property is eight thousand square feet, industrial warehouse, and they currently pay eighty-eight dollars. They would pay four hundred and eight dollars, so a three hundred and twenty-dollar annual change, and that would be twenty-six dollars a month to the average industrial property. And then the average institutional property is three thousand square feet. They would be going from eighty-four dollars to two hundred and thirteen dollars a year. That's a a hundred and twenty-nine dollar change a year, and that's ten dollars a month.
Is it one of those categories, are churches included in?
That's the institutional properties, uh the the last table there, so uh the average size for them is three thousand square feet. Currently, they pay about eighty-four dollars a year, and they would be paying two hundred and thirteen dollars a year, so slightly more than the average home.
So churches would be assessed?
Yeah, currently they're assessed under your program, so it's uh it's, that's a um a decision for the city to make, uh you know.
Non- to to be clear, nonprofit churches are currently being assessed?
That's true, yes.
Are you sure about that?
I'm I'm pretty sure. I think I changed changed a few years back.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Um and and that's that's totally up to the city to make. It's a voluntary exemption if you want to exempt churches and nonprofits. Uh they don't, they don't pay any other uh taxes, but they're exempt from property taxes. Um but it's kind of uh one of the weird things with assessments is that they are eligible to pay, and they do benefit from the um, you know, the availability of fire service, so.
So originally, when we set set it up, we did not charge it, but that was changed.
We, okay, we did not, maybe it was eight years ago, something like that. But I'll I'll give you an example with a large churches across the street. Uh the original assessments brought them up to almost ten thousand dollars a year, but I think it brought them down to around seven thousand if they paid it early. And so, but I I'm not sure, but I thought it had gone down a little bit since then, but now it looks like it's going back up again.
Okay. Go ahead.
And this is uh the last impact slide here. This shows the vacant properties, so currently they pay zero dollars. Uh under the proposed assessments, they would pay fifty-eight dollars a year, uh so that's about five dollars a month. Um and that doesn't scale, it's fifty-eight dollars flat per vacant property regardless of size. And then mobile home parks, I so I picked uh one example of a mobile home park uh with five hundred and ninety-nine units. Uh currently, they pay eleven thousand dollars a year. Under the proposed assessments, they would pay eighty-three thousand dollars a year. It's a seventy-two thousand dollar change, which is about six thousand dollars a month. And when you look at it on a per-unit basis, uh currently they pay about nineteen dollars per mobile home. And the 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 whole uh logic behind this change is that each mobile home is equivalent to a single-family home. And they derive about the same amount of benefit from the fire, the availability of fire service. So changing them to a hundred and forty dollars per unit across the board, no cap on residential. Um each mobile home would then be increased from nineteen dollars to a hundred and forty dollars. That's a hundred and twenty-one dollar annual change, and that's a ten dollar per month change per unit.
Okay.
Uh this is a single-family survey of a bunch of different communities, and this doesn't even include all of the communities in the state. There's a lot of fire assessment programs in the state of Florida. Um but just to give you guys an idea of currently where your uh single-family charge of a hundred and forty dollars is in comparison to communities across the state. Um you're highlighted there with that orange bar towards the bottom quarter of the survey here, so um it's it's definitely not uh not the highest around, it's uh but i- i- and there's a lot of things that go into this too, I would caution, um you know, uh looking at this because uh you don't know how much of their program they're they're funding. There's a lot of places in South Florida where they have a hundred percent funding model. So they fund all of their fire department with the fire assessment and take a lot of pressure off of their property tax rate. Uh and then there's some places that uh, you know, fund maybe twenty percent of their fire department with their fire assessment, so it is a little bit of apples to oranges, but sometimes councils are interested in seeing, you know, how the other assessments stack up.
Sure, so basically you would like to stick with your methodology of uh the percentage of calls based to given to a certain area. So we were sixty-eight percent given to homes, so you would like to keep it at sixty-eight percent of the calls, sixty-eight percent of the value going to the homes. In other words, if we want to fund it at instead of forty-two percent, make it eighty-four percent.
It would still.
You could do that, but it would have to be proportional across the board.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yep. So uh you can't target one rate and say, the council couldn't say, well, I think commercial should be higher than that.
Right.
It is, it, once you do that, you kind of jeopardize the integrity of the the methodology, and the methodology's been held up in court, so uh it's best to just stick with the methodology, the allocation is what it is, and um uh you can make a decision on how much money you generate with the program.
Well, let me ask you a question. Uh I'm baking lots that we're not fire assessing them now. I think Sebring right now is doing like nineteen dollars a lot. And so we had no comparison in Avon Park, but by the calls you want to raise it to fifty-eight dollars, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. That that's a pretty big jump for some people in one year, in my opinion.
And i- and it could be that um their allocation methodology that they have in Sebring, they there maybe their fire department has responded less to vacant lots over the past three years. It it really depends on how often the fire department goes to certain properties.
Sebring is funding theirs at twenty percent. We're funding ours at forty-two percent.
That's another, that's another factor to consider.
They're gonna go at a twenty-nine dollars next year, what I heard, but basically what you're saying is that the study you did with the methodology that we pretty much have to, it's either, it's either all or nothing.
Right.
Yes, sir. Well, y- you have, you have a decision to make in terms of how much revenue you generate. So uh you could bring that number down, and it would proportionally bring down all the rates for the properties, or you could bring the number up, and it would proportionally bring up the rates.
Okay. Okay. I'll let you finish up and then we'll ask some questions.
Yep, I just have one more slide here to summarize, and uh the the first bullet point here just shows the the rates that we calculated under the current um assumptions. Uh it, the second bullet point just summarizes that it uh recovers approximately forty-two percent of the cost of service, and uh that results in the assessments build of nine hundred and seventy thousand per year. And uh it's our recommendation to continue to monitor the fire assessment rates in the future and uh update the study as deemed necessary, which, you know, we recommend is every three to five years. Uh and then there's a little bit of a timeline here. Um there's a lot of statutory requirements when it comes to this and changing the fire assessment rates. The first step in the process is really determining the rates that you want, uh and the. The first step in the process is really determining the rates that you want, uh, and the revenue that you want to generate with the program. So that's kind of where we are right now. Uh, second step is adopting that, and what we call initial assessment resolution, which says we're considering these rates. Um, and third step is a first-class mailing notice. So a, a letter has to go to every property owner in the city saying. Uh, we're considering changing the fire assessment rates to this X, Y, and Z. Uh, this will happen on uh, this date, the public hearing. We invite you to show up and voice your concerns. Um, and, and voice your, you know, opinion of the changes. And uh, and then you have that public hearing and the, the council adopts that, the final assessment rates. I'll um, create the assessment role, which is the tax role that I send to the tax collector and he makes sure that everybody has uh, the, the right assessment on their tax bill in November. And with that, that's the conclusion of my presentation, but I'll be, be available here to answer any questions, counsel may have.
I got a few questions for you, mostly relating to why the excluded uh, types of uses are excluded. Is, are they all statutory or is that more common practice?
It's more of a common industry practice. I, I didn't think there's a whole lot in the statutes about what has to be excluded, but there are certain properties that just in nature don't benefit from fire services, like lake bottoms. Right-of-ways.
Sure.
Uh, common elements. There's some weird properties in the property praiser database and we just kind of exclude those. They're kind of non-normal.
Sure. So one anomaly uh, that I see, number nine thirty-eight is degraded and cared-for plots of land. Now, that's an excluded use. However, we are assessing vacant lots. So is it just a wording issue there or what?
Yeah, and it could be. I'll have to look into that. Um.
It's page C three.
I can follow up with that specific property use. When I, when I reviewed the, the D, well, they're called D O R use codes.
Okay.
Uh, when I reviewed the ones um, in my model, all of the ones that seemed vacant, just kind of vacant lots in nature were included. And that could be a code that doesn't actually exist in the city's boundaries and it just might be a, a catch-all there.
Nine thirty-six is vacant lot, nine thirty-eight is graded and cared-for plots of land, which I would take that to mean basically the same thing.
Yeah.
Even nine thirty-one says open land or field.
Right.
And then six sixty-nine says forest, timberland, or woodland, which seems like that would be something that we would want to be able to provide fire service for.
Yeah, I agree. And uh, I'll have to review the, that list and the resolution again with the, yeah, I can sort of see it, but.
Yep.
Yeah, it's, it's what, what's possible is since we've made this change to now include vacant and this could be. I have to check with the attorney that prepared this again, Chris. Uh, it could be kind of a leftover from the previous one, and those are actually now what we're calling the vacant category. It's no longer excluded, so.
Chris is on the, on Zoom. We need him.
Oh, okay. Uh, yeah, so I think what, well, we'd probably have to strike that out for those categories and change that to say vacant, because that's actually vacant and uh, they are included.
Okay.
I think Chris maybe wants to speak to that.
And Chris, that's on page C three. I, I don't know if you can hear me.
Good evening. This is Chris Rowe. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hey, very, very good. My apologies. Um, I was not able to attend in person, but I have been listening to the presentation on Zoom. And um, the, the, the list of parcel uh, use codes included in C one does need to be updated to reflect the fact that vacant lots. Open lands, et cetera, are, are now going to be assessed and will not be excluded. The section three oh oh six of the resolution proper does list the excluded parcels, and they're fair, fairly limited, subsurface rights, rights of way, rivers and lakes, wasteland dump. But if um, council is inclined to adopt the resolution this evening, then I would suggest it does so um, as amended uh, under um, appendix C to make those corrections. And then I'll get that fixed before the um, resolution is signed.
Hey, Chris, while I've got you, uh, the subject item number ten uh, zero nine one utilities. So we've got several, obviously, I, I can understand the argument to not assess, you know, power lines and things of that nature, pipelines and whatnot. However, in Avon Park in particular, we do have a rather large substation that used to be a power generation station. So they have uh, you know, barns, other outbuildings. It's a significant piece of property. Would something like that also be assessed or would that still be exempted?
So the, the, the parcel codes that are listed in there, uh, section, section three oh seven for exempt parcels, those are primarily governmentally owned properties. Because of the difficulty associated with one local government imposing a special assessment against another. So as you can see, the, the hu- hospitals, county, state, uh, uh, a lot of these are, are, are government use. And I, I think zero nine one was intended to refer to publicly owned utilities. Privately owned utilities are generally not exempt from the assessment.
So would Duke Energy, for instance, that's the company we're talking about, would that be exempted or not?
Yeah, it, it would be exempted so, so long as it's uh, uh, the type of parcel that receives a benefit from the city's provision of fire services. If it's, if it's a parcel that's owned by a private utility, but it's, it's undevelopable, for instance, it's, it's a strip parcel, maybe ten foot wide by thirty feet long. It's left over from some subdivision. It's incapable of being built with any sort of use. So generally, you wouldn't assess that, but um, um, wh- why don't, uh, wh- when I go through and clean up. C one to remove those um, excluded references, I'll also look at oh nine one and, and make sure that we're not exempting privately owned utility parcels from the fire assessment.
This particular parcel is probably seventy to eighty acres uh, on Lake Hila. And it's definitely developable.
Okay. And at the, at the very least, even if it was vacant, if, if the city is going to move forward with assessing vacant properties, we'll loop them in for that.
Okay. Uh, so with the issue of hospitals, I understand if they're government-owned hospitals, they would not be assessed, but privately owned hospitals would be assessed?
You see what the, the, the code says, uh, oh eight five.
Yeah, in my experience, Chris, the typically private institutional properties are assessed, so.
HCA, Advent Health, all those are assessed.
Hmm.
Yeah, the, the only, the only reason the government wanted to accept it is because of the sovereign immunity issue, but if you, but even they can be assessed if you have a contract which, in which they want to connect to your, your system and they agreed to do so. Um, but if they um, if they're just connected by, in the past, now you're out of luck. Gainesville case, it's pretty much determined that.
Okay. What about with uh, college, state colleges and uh, public schools?
Yeah, the, the, those you generally cannot assess because they're governmentally owned unless the, the party that owns them consents to it.
Right, okay.
So be usually better off to just look, you know, not even try to assess them rather than potentially getting into, you know, a, a legal dispute with them over whether or not, you know, you have the authority to, to assess them. And then on their end, you know, whether they have the authority to pay it. So.
Highly unlikely to win anyway. Okay. But to be clear, nonprofit uh, organizations will be assessed the same as any other use?
Yes, that's right. And I will um, again, clean up that section three oh seven to make sure we're not inadvertently excluding anyone who would normally be appropriate for assessment. This list of exempt parcels is hi- hi- historical. It's been the city's practice to have the same list over some time, but. Um, in light of these questions, I, I will go through and just scrub them to make sure that the, the only properties we're exempting are those that are governmentally owned.
Okay, very good. Last question is uh, some time ago, we rolled nursing homes into regular commercial, I believe, or it might be institutional, governmental.
It's institutional.
Okay, obviously, uh, facilities like that typically receive a lot of calls. Um, so is it that we cannot make them their own category or we should not?
Um, well, in my experience, whenever you make it its own category like that, when, when you kind of um, specially designate it, it. The, the rates are going to be almost cost prohibitive for them. It's going to be, you know, extremely punitive rates because you're, there's a small amount of. Uh, you know, square footage to divide it amongst and uh, you're really separating out the calls that go straight to them. So. Uh, it, it doesn't typically work because the, you know, the assessments are just too high. Um, and it's better to have them in a more general category that, you know, they share similar, you know, features and. Um, um, likeness with. So that's why they kind of fit best in the institutional category. Um, and then Chris, if you wanted to opine on that.
The, 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 the only other thing I would add is that um, I think Pete mentioned earlier that when he performs the call analysis, one of the early steps is to exclude any calls that went to non-fire events. For instance, EMS calls, because you, you really can't factor those into the, the, the calculation, the assessment, because assessment can't fund EMS. So it may be, I, I haven't seen the, the, the specifics of the call data in nursing homes, but it may be that although they're, they're fielding, the, the responses are going to the nursing home, they're not of a fire nature. They're, they're more EMS. And those would typically be excluded from the consideration anyway.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions?
I have a question for. Because Avon Park have the demand-based model. If we, if we didn't have that model. And um, we, we separate the residence, a household by square footage. Because right now with the demand-based model, we can only raise the revenue up or down, right? I get that part. But if we didn't have that model and we was charging rate according to the square footage. Would the revenue equals about the same? Or would it be more? Would it be less?
Uh, I, it's hard to say. There's a lot of factors uh, involved in that and, and, and personally, I haven't really seen square footage used much as a methodology. The only other methodology that I've encountered and I'm, I'm practiced in is what they call the availability methodology. And it's a two-tier approach where it's a flat fee per parcel across the state or across the city, a hundred dollars a parcel. And then the tier two is the variable where it's five dollars for every five thousand dollar value of structure value. So it scales according to the value of the structure and it recognizing that, you know. Uh, logically, a, a, a more valuable structure uh, is getting more benefit from protection of the loss of that structure from, from a fire, you know, if a um. Uh, a, a million-dollar mansion burnt down, they'd more, um, they get more benefit from the availability of fire service than if a hundred thousand dollar house burnt down. Because they're benefiting from the protection of a million dollars rather than a hundred thousand. Um, so that's the only other real, really prevalent uh, uh, methodology that I've experienced. Um, however, i- in, I mean, one argument to make uh, for, you know, varying the single-family home fee, because right now it's flat. Is that typically a fire department sends the same response that regardless of the size of a home. If they know that it's coming from a resident, a residence, they send, you know, X amount of. Trucks and firefighters, et cetera. So it's not like the response really varies uh, depending on the size of the home. They're sending the same people out no matter what.
If it's a structured fire, everybody gets excited and everybody goes. I think we all know that. We, we had a question out there. Name and address for the record, please.
Eric Wilson, fourteen forty-five. South Carolina Avenue.
Yes, sir.
Um, first of all, there are a couple of questions. First of all, when did you adopt the assessment for nonprofit organizations like churches?
Any?
Can you remember that?
Well, okay, uh, I think it's.
You said about eight years ago, you said?
Probably eight, ten years ago.
Yeah, because I, I know we've, you know, for our church, but um. Would that benefit or would you benefit if you uh, put that in its own category, nonprofit? Uh, and I know you have, you know, you got, you got us on the in, in churches, you got industrial now, right? The industrial areas?
Probably institutional.
Institutional.
In the institutional category.
But will it not benefit? Because, I mean, that's a big jump. When you're talking about uh, what, two hundred and thirteen? I saw that.
Yeah, and I could go.
It went from two point three cents to, was it five cents or six?
And then what you're doing is you're lumping nonprofit organizations, churches into industrial. And that's, that's going to be a major jump.
The argument becomes, how can you justify, you know, in the eyes of saving lives, does it matter if it's a nonprofit?
Yeah.
It doesn't. And that, that's the argument that they're.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. That's why, that's why I asked about, you know, when did that, uh, when did you change or when did you start assessing nonprofit organizations?
Yeah, I didn't realize that that was the thing. I knew that the county, when they did theirs, that they were assessing churches and obviously it was a big deal. I didn't realize that the city was actually paying, so.
The city was asked, uh.
That churches inside the city were paying for our assessment.
Yeah, yeah, well, I know, I know, but I'm, I'm just saying, man, that's, that's going to be a major jump when you talk about, you know.
I understand.
Not, nonprofit or, now you, 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 this has to go before the uh, 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 come before the board anyway, right?
Yes.
Before that and then, yeah, you, okay.
Basically what we're doing tonight is approving the methodology and the funding amount. In other words, the forty-two percent level.
Okay, but then after that, then it has to be.
Or two meetings, is it?
So it's uh, one public hearing after this.
One more public hearing, okay. So there'll be one more public hearing after this.
Okay.
It, was there a second question or?
That was it. Those two things, when, when, you know, when did you assess that? And you said, my eight, eight years ago now, and you talk, I asked.
Could it be in a separate category other than in the industrial or?
I've never, it's an institutional and uh, I've never seen it in its own category before.
Really?
No, I, and I dealt with a good bit of assessment programs. It's always in that institutional category.
Are other cities assessing?
Oh, absolutely.
Yep, in, including Highlands County has of a couple of years ago. All right, other questions?
I have a question. Um, any of the ones on the chart that are considered multifamily? Since we don't have a, a category for that that's being assessed, are they going to be assessed in the commercial category or is it going to be per family unit?
It's, it's per dwelling unit. So they're, they're assessed that residential dwelling rate, the one forty per unit. Um, uh, in accordance with their, the amount of units on their property. So if they're.
So anything that says multifamily on there will now be assessed that way?
Yes.
Uh, I, I have a question, Chris. Um, Chris, it, was it the, uh, this has been properly noticed for um, reading tonight, right? The passage of the resolution or do we have to have another meeting that um, is specially uh, announced as a public hearing?
So the, the, the resolution that council has before it this evening does not require extraordinary notice under Florida law. It merely requires the typical notice of any, any other item the council might consider, you know, included on the agenda. At the public hearing, which I believe will be in September, however, we do have extraordinary notice requirements. We will have to mail notice, individual mailed notice to all, all property owners in the. City telling them the time, date, place in the hearing and the amount of their proposed assessment. And will also publish a notice and both of those published and mailed notices will happen at least twenty days before that September eleventh hearing date.
So that's why, why I wanted to clarify that, you know, you, I mean, if you agree, then you should pass it tonight as opposed to putting it off. If you want, if you want to put it off, then that's up to you. But I just want to make sure it's a, you're, you're okay to pass it tonight so you can move forward.
Yeah, as far as our scheduling goes, we really need to pass it tonight so that we can meet our other meeting requirements.
One, one other note I might, if, if, if I may, mayor council, th- this resolution has the effect of basically setting the ceiling. On the most you will collect through the assessment and the highest rates you will use for the assessment for the upcoming fiscal year. At the public hearing, i- if you so determine, you, you could bring the rates down. You just wouldn't be able to go up.
Okay.
So it's already been, the, the short title's already been read.
Okay, the short title does not include a funding percentage though, right?
No.
Okay.
Chris, that doesn't make a difference, right? The short titles, um, by reading it tonight.
Nope, nope.
Thanks.
Okay.
I have one, one last question on uh, mobile home parks. We have a, still have Northerners that come down with motorhomes. And they, they go into a mobile home park, maybe up to six, seven months a year. Do they get charged a fire assessment for the, you know, for, because they're there more than three months out of the year or because they're mobile, you, we don't?
Yeah, I know. That's a good question. Um, so we actually treat RV, we call them RVs, travel trailers. Uh, you know, there's a number of different names for them, but. The way we treat those and they're listed, so we use uh, the Florida Department of Health has a, a listing of all the mobile home parks in the state and they have. Um, basically an inventory of the amount of spaces that are mobile home and the amount of spaces that are travel trailer, RV.
Okay.
For the number of spaces, say they ha- have uh, ten spaces listed for RV. We take an assumption that there's, there's uh, on average about five hundred square feet per RV times the commercial rate. And they're charged that way for, for those RV travel trailers. Since technically it is part of their business, it's a commercial in nature. It's almost like a hotel. Or a motel and that it's like a transitory uh, space. Uh, so they're, they're charged the commercial rate and there's an assumption for square footage per RV lot. Um, in addition to the mobile homes that are charged per dwelling unit, the residential rate.
So to be clear, the, the lot itself is what's being charged, whether there's an RV there.
Yeah, there's one, there's not, there's, we're charging for the lot.
And this is if they have utilities or does it matter?
I don't think it matters.
Okay.
Yeah.
Reason why I ask, we have a proposed uh just like that RV lot company that wants to come in and build a couple hundred spots, so.
Yeah.
Be nice for them to understand what they're getting into there.
Yeah, so whatever, um, you know, number of spots they're considering, it'd be that times five hundred. And then that would be their commercial square footage times the square foot, uh the commercial rate.
Okay, so for your calculations and for approval tonight, uh just how we did with the millage, if we wanted to, you know, approve this at a at a fifty percent or a fifty-five percent. Or whatever percentage, is that easy for you to do there? To change those values?
Uh, yeah, I would, I I mean, I couldn't do it right now, but I I could do it pretty quickly, yeah.
Okay, so. Similar point to what we did with Millage earlier tonight, uh we can approve this, currently it's at a forty-two percent funding level. We could approve this at fifty percent, you know, thirty percent, whatever we wanted to. And then we can simply always go down, but we cannot go up at our next meeting, so. I uh personally think that the fire assessment is far more uh fair than ad valorem tax. Um I definitely would rather lean more heavily on fire assessment than I would add valorum, um so. I definitely would be in favor of uh noticing it at a fifty percent or even a fifty-five percent and then we can play with the numbers later. Would it be at our next regular meeting?
When when's that meeting?
Our next regular, our next meeting that the that this will be discussed, fire assessment will be discussed.
Oh, yes, absolutely, yeah, yeah, I mean, it the what the calculation of the the rates under whatever you decide.
Yeah, so will will the public hearing be at our next meeting is what the question is.
I think you said, I think.
No, it's September eleventh, I believe.
Okay, so we have some time.
Yeah.
Yep. Was there a question? You know the drill.
Barry Foster, News Director, Highlands Radio Group, thirty-seven fifty, Highway twenty-seven North, to give you a little. Perspective on this, when this first came up, there were seven people up here. And they had to hold a public hearing in the community center, it was one of the two largest public hearings that I have attended in Avon Park. In fact, one guy came up and sang a song to tell you why he could not pay his fire assessment.
Okay.
Uh, when they put it in uh effect, the the late Steve Roberts, who was a councilman, made the first suggestion saying. There is a large percentage of homes in Avon Park, they did not pay any ad valorem assessments. So they enacted the fire assessment so everyone could have the joy of bearing the burden of municipal government. Uh, in a neighboring community, uh John Griffin, a city councilman there, took it a step further and said. We'll take as much money as we get from our fire assessment and subtract it from the ad valorem assessment. In order to, as you say, balance things out. So I just wanted to give you a little historical perspective because probably a lot of you weren't around when it was first uh. Put into effect and and the reason it was put into effect was to kind of balance the amount of money that all residents and. Of course, the the churches weren't paying any ad valorem assessments, but a lot of the the commercial were and they thought if they could. Reduce the, it wasn't a dollar, quid pro quo, that this for that, but if they could give them a little bit of um. Uh of residual payment or a little bit of uh relief by putting out a a an assessment across where everybody paid something. It would kind of balance out the tax levels, so that's all I wanted to tell you.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, mathematicians, if we did go with fifty percent, what would the residential go to?
It would go up by eight percent. You go up by, well, technically it'd be more like nine and some change percent, so you're looking at thirteen, fourteen bucks.
But as we add valorum tax, it's just a.
It'd go up a little over fifty some dollars a year, a hundred fifty something.
For residential, okay, that's all I wanna know.
According to my Avon Park math here.
One forty, one fifty-two.
Yeah.
But again, it's it's like with the millage, what we did, you know, that that's what it's noticed at, it doesn't have to be what.
Yeah, so we could still come down after that.
So the idea is that you look at your budget, your entire budget, and you look at your entire fire assessment, you look at all your fund revenues and you figure out. At what level you want to be across the board. As of right now, if we put it out at forty-two, we're married to that, we cannot go any higher than forty-two, therefore we can't play anything with ad valorem. But if you notice it higher, now you have some leeway to go back and forth on between the two different funds there. So I make a motion that we notice this uh at the fifty-five percent funding level. Motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash fourteen with the stated changes um as proposed by. The attorney, Chris Rowe.
Yes.
Uh and at the fifty-five percent funding level, so we'll be looking for a second.
I'll second, that'll bring him in too.
We have a motion and a second, questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Benar?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Guys, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for your time, it's been a pleasure working with the city.
Thank you very much. Chief, anything to add?
Uh, thank you, that's it.
Okay, appreciate it, chief. All right, item number nine, mandatory sewer connect lakefront properties, Jerry?
Yep, um. An issue came up with regard to some um uh lots and I don't know how these lots ever got approved without um. Um, when they were subdivided, they're supposed to have um water and sewer, but um. Any rate, they don't have sewer and several of the lots are on uh a lake. And um so, uh you know, it it to me in two thousand twenty-three, it's insane to. Uh have septic tanks on a lake. Right now, our mandatory connection policy states that that they have to connect if they're within two hundred feet.
Right.
Uh to me, that's inadequate for lakefront property because, you know, you're you're talking about um. Pollution of the lake, I mean, everybody else, or I should say, that's exaggeration, but many cities are trying to now retrofit. And have, you know, PEP systems where the septic tank system pumps into the sewer system. Um in order to get the septic tanks away from the lake because they do create a huge issue for lake for lake property pollution. So um I just wanted to bring it before you, before I wrote up an ordinance, but you know, I'd propose um a five hundred foot requirement for. Uh from lakefront property, um if if they're within five hundred feet, then you know, then five hundred feet of um. A distance from from the um sewer system. Uh, that always, you always have the option of running it yourself if you think that that's too much for the people and then doing a tax assessment. Um, Chris Rowe can prepare one and so on for the the homes, that I shouldn't call a tax assessment, it's just an assessment. And um so um. We um, you you always have that option and um I have talked to Chris uh Chris about it and he feels pretty confident that's not gonna be a huge issue. Uh if you want to do that and um, but um it's my recommendation that you do change that because you do not want to have septic tank systems on your lakefront. In two thousand twenty-four, just my opinion.
Okay, these uh lakefront properties, are there, is there particular lots that you're talking about, a new subdivision or something or?
No, that that's the problem is they are an existing subdivision that was done some time ago and I don't. And and for some reason, they weren't held to the normal requirement under the land development code of. Of when you subdivide, you have to have water and sewer in order to have lot sizes that they have. Um, so, yeah, even that, I mean, I I've talked to um Jeff and Jeff provided me with the land development code. That aspects, so I'm gonna make changes to those as well, if you approve it and uh see that we can. Just in the future, make that mandatory connection policy, make connections and I I just um, that's just, like I said, it's my opinion.
Okay, do we have an idea how many uh properties currently fit that description and what the economic impact would be to those people?
I have no idea, um I do know that um. Um generally speaking, you give them a year in order to, you know, do the connection and um if it's um. Uh if they meet that requirement, of course, if you run the the pipe itself and you do, you know, um uh they're they're gonna have to pay right away. So they may as well connect right away.
Okay.
And you you give them a period of time, you know, reasonable based on the cost of it per house. Uh for connection, how long they have to pay it back.
Okay, is this something that came up be- because of particular properties that got annexed or something or?
No, I think they were how, their their properties are, they're on, they're on the our side of the lake, right?
Yeah, it wasn't, it's it's been in the city for years. And and in these, in the cases it brought up, we don't know if DEP would even allow them to have a septic system and that close to the lake.
But the home already exists and everything?
No, no, it's empty lots.
There are lots they wanna, they wanna build on.
Oh, I got you.
Oh, so they're not existing houses that have septic tanks? Oh, okay.
No, 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 and that's something we can address in the future as well, but right now, it's just, it's sort of like, you know, you wanna build a house on a lake. And put a septic tank in, doesn't make any sense, so.
Well, I mean, I I personally, I agree with you and uh I think we have a lot of issues with uh sewers going into our waterways, particularly in our. Saltwater ways, which is causing a lot of algae blooms and whatnot. But um I would just be very interested to see what exactly the fees would be, I mean, is this uh, you know, is it a ten thousand dollar burden? Is it a hundred and fifty thousand dollar burden, you see what I'm saying? Um if it's extraordinary burden, then perhaps we need to look at these properties a little bit closer.
Yeah, no, I don't think it's gonna be extraordinary burden, but what what I fix the uh um. Land development code aspect of it, that that in the future, nobody's gonna subdivide without doing, you know, the water and sewer. Um and I, you know, that's gonna be more than a thousand feet, you know, uh because it just doesn't make any sense, so, yeah, I mean. We can always revisit this later and I'm gonna provide you with a an ordinance to to consider. But um I think we did a calculation on the one that was um that we're considering now, right, it wasn't similar. I I don't recall what it is and and we'd have to ask Joseph to come in maybe at the next meeting and and discuss it when we when we actually go through the process of approving the ordinance to. Discuss what he thinks it would cost, and obviously it depends on difficulties of laying the line, whether there's a lot of utilities there already or whether it's just a. Uh and and whether it's paved here, there's not paved road, as I understand it, so it makes it a lot easier and we believe that there's so few houses, we can actually do six inch. Pipe as opposed to eight inch, which is the standard, I mean, six inches is standard for for, you know, uh several houses.
Sure.
But um and for a lot of houses, you have to have eight inch, um but um in this particular instance, we're looking at that aspect of it as well.
But would you uh, would you look at them bringing those pipes up to their property line or would they have to go to the nearest connection?
Within five hundred feet.
Other property line, other property line, because everything on their property is their responsibility and doesn't involve our system at all.
But you don't know how close our.
We do know that it's that that some of the houses are within two hundred feet and some and several of them are not. Uh the particular manhole, we're we're checking to see if there's another manhole on the other end that might get some of the other houses closer, but overall, you know. We we don't really wanna let any, even if there's only two out of the seven or was it seven or nine, I can't remember, I think it was.
Yeah, Jerry said houses, but they're all vacant lots right now.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, better but better now than later.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, thanks.
Look forward to seeing the resolution. All right, city manager report?
Mosquito control. I know more about than I want to and I still know nothing about it, so I'm just gonna give you the breakdown as I got here. Um, Florida Department Ag and Consumer Services, I told you that when I got here, I found out we're doing it without license, they do require it. Not only who's spraying, but then if you have a municipality who has it, then there has to be a a control program. Supervisor who also has to take the um a class. Sunna Lakes is the only one that we found in the the county doing it. Um David Roberts spoke to an individual down there, said they do it on a weekly basis. It's minimal results, one to two days and the mosquitoes are right back in the area. Kind of one of them spraying, make people happy. We spoke to Sebring, they don't do it, nor do they plan on doing it. Um I spoke to um Gator Howton, he used to be the en- or the engineer, one of them's down there and I got a couple of them down there now, he said. Um they're not doing, and he can tell you when they, back when they did do it, they received as many complaints of people saying they couldn't breathe from spre- breathing it is a. Is um the people were happy they did it. Um, I got a published and peer reviewed research from a professor that says only point one percent. Uh the pesticides on average even reach the target area. Um, over time, mosquitoes become resistant to it. And there's other studies here that show it kills um bees and um. Other flying insects, just not, um actually butterflies is listed. Uh. Another one that says it kills all bugs, we look for, no, nobody in Highlands County does it, we got a quote from. Uh a company that does it for pretty much um the coastal counties, two or three coastal counties. Uh it'd be a hundred and thirty-one hour or dollars per mile and we had lane miles, so half that'd be eight thousand three hundred eighty-four dollars. For that's one time and it would be a hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-five cents for an acre for lava control. More for catch basins, twelve dollars each on those, so.
Sounds expensive.
Sounds expensive, um there are some, somebody brought up about the dunks or the bites and that handing it out. Where you can go right, uh a citizen can go right down to the lows, I see sells them. And out of most of the studies in there, they said really it's up to homeowners, if you've got laying water, get rid of it. Bird bath or even the bottom of a of a uh uh plant growing out of uh plastic especially. So staff's recommendation is we don't move forward it, David Roberts says. Even he takes a class, he does not feel comfortable being over something like this with pesticides and I gotta agree with him.
And there was actually a nice article in either today or yesterday's paper, basically telling you exactly the same thing, you know, get rid of the water, the bird bath, the tires. Uh I know that I have a pole and I I went and bought those little doughnut things one time and threw it in the back of my pole. And pretty much all they did was kind of float it around until it stuck in the skimmer and then uh all he did is made the pole dirty, so and then the mosquitoes are still there, so I. I I've never been in favor of the spraying because like I think what you said the results were, they're minimal or as effectiveness and then if. If you're gonna take care of bees and butterflies and other animals, then I don't think we should.
Oh, another study say these mosquitoes can travel one to three miles, so. Kill some of the best.
It's a whole lot more than that.
Yeah, if if you have bromeliads, those are bigger tractors, because bromeliads basically. They fertilize themselves by the water in the middle of them.
Yep, all that explains why I have so many by my wife.
That's it.
Yeah, it'll do it, I have them too.
Yep. Okay.
It would be better with a four dollar can of off.
Yeah, they.
That's what it sounds like.
Mosquitoes squeeze your arm to see if you're gonna take home to the kids or not.
Yeah. Any other questions, comments on mosquito control?
No.
Seeing none, uh are we giving direction to the city manager to not proceed with anything? With mosquitoes?
My opinion.
There's not a motion, yeah.
Okay, you have it, anything else, city manager report?
Ralph just told me no, so.
Okay, all right, it's nice to know who's really running the show around here. All right, if there's nothing else for the good of the city, entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I got a question. I, I know I did and I'm not sure if the council did, um. What is the council doing about the email and what appeared in the paper about the homeless, if anything?
Good question.
I was told.
Did you say the homeless?
Yes.
Yeah, um if you want to have a workshop, Mayor, I've spoken to um Shane Braylinger who would like to come. So if we want to set up a workshop, just talk about it and.
Okay, when would we like to have this workshop? On a Monday night, maybe a off night? What what does our schedule look like for uh upcoming budget meetings? Do we have anything coming up on the off nights?
No, not on the off nights, they're all scheduled on the council night.
Okay, do we want to have a special night for this or do we want to do it uh before a meeting or just make it part of a regular meeting?
We have the sheriff's department come to the workshop.
I'm, obviously that would be a good idea.
Do we need to reach out to them to find out availability or whatever?
Okay, let me do this, why doesn't, why don't the staff come up with a couple of uh dates and present it at our next meeting and we'll decide at our next meeting when the workshop should be?
I was recently told that Highlands County is going to have a meeting on that.
When?
I asked the person when and I didn't get a date back, so I think I would call one of the county commissioners to find out.
There will be a commission, what you're talking about?
So. I'll call tomorrow and find out and if I have one, I'll pass along and email and shoot them out if anyone wants to go. If it's at the, you know, commission building or if it's at the college or wherever.
Yeah, so we'll have another regular reg- regular uh city council meeting in two weeks and uh at that meeting in two weeks, we can decide when the workshop, is that amenable?
Yep, sounds good to me.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, so the next scheduled council meeting is on the seventh or no?
It'd be the.
Cause we have a special budget meeting on the fourteenth, that's when?
Our regular one will be on the fourteenth and what I'm saying is we'll decide on the fourteenth when to have our. uh, special meeting about the homeless situation.
Okay, so is that going to be with the special budget meeting at five o'clock?
No, we're going to decide when to have it at that meeting. So it'll be after that at some point.
Okay.
So obviously our city attorney is going to have to be up to date on everything to do with the homeless situation. And, uh, obviously we'll invite the sheriff's department, uh, hopefully the, uh, county meeting that was mentioned, uh, will have some insightful information. But, you know, I've gotten a ton of complaints about this, um, issue. Uh, it's definitely a hot button issue. You get half, half, uh, want to give them everything in the world, the other half wants to run them out of town. So it's definitely a lot of strong feelings on both sides. Um, but, uh, hopefully we get a good turnout from the, um, general, from the voters here in Avon Park. Hopefully everybody shows up and actually voices their opinion, what they'd like to see. Obviously there's limited options that the actual city government has. Um, but definitely it's a community issue and hopefully they do their part. So Barry, feel free to talk about it.
Yes, if you know when the county's having a meeting, let me know.
I do not know, but I was privy to a conversation between a county commissioner and a Sebring city council member. Because Sebring was noting some significant issues with the homeless in their city. And, uh, the two said, you know, we ought to have a workshop, but I don't know that the city of Sebring or the county has ever boasted that subject. But I do know that a Sebring city council member and a county commissioner did have that conversation and, uh, uh, I can tell you later which one it was and if you want to call him, I can get you a number.
Okay.
Very good. That is actually what I heard. It was going to be the, the county and the city of Sebring would have a joint meeting.
And for the record, that was Barry Foster with the Kohan Radio Network. All right. Anything else for the good of the city?
Nope.
Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.